One work session of the Haverhill Horsum School District Board of School Directors. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded and the opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Haverhill Horsum School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Haverhill Horsum District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. If we could please stand for the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Record, roll call.
Thank you, Madam President. Jennifer Wilson.
Here.
David Brown.
Here.
Ara Coombs.
Here.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
Here.
Susan Hanziger Hoff.
Here.
Jim Greenhall.
Here.
Marion McCouch. And Tara Connor Halston.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First up, we have a presentation from Principal Karen Cantor and some of her teachers from Simmons.
Good evening, Madam President. Prior to Mrs. Cantor presenting this evening, I'd just like to make a brief introduction if you don't mind. As we enter the second half of the school year, it has been our annual practice to spotlight lessons, projects, and programs that are the hallmark of a positive educational experience in the Haverhill Horsum School District. And while during the pandemic, hybrid and remote instructional practices have shifted the paradigm in classrooms across the world, we are excited to continue this tradition by providing you with a glimpse of the innovative strategies that our educators employ to ensure that learning experiences for our students are meaningful, engaging, and collaborative. Throughout February and into early March, you will see how Haverhill Horsum teachers optimize student engagement and use technology resources for planning and delivering teaching and learning. These teachers have taken on the steep challenge of reinventing coursework and mastering new technologies to connect with students and make online school a little more fun. Haverhill Horsum believes schools achieve their utmost potential when each student experiences relevant culturally responsive, rigorous learning, and benefits from the collective guidance and care of exceptional teachers and leaders. Tonight, we will feature Simmons Elementary School under the leadership of Mrs. Karen Cantor and Dr. Alicia G., Crooked Billit Elementary School under the direction of Ms. Kelly Sando and Mrs. Meredith Kane Sokel, and Hatter Academy under the direction of Dr. Bree DeAngelo. And now I'd like to introduce to you Karen Cantor, Principal of Simmons Elementary School.
Thank you very much, Dr. Taylor, for that lovely introduction. At Simmons Elementary School and across the elementaries, we are using responsive classrooms as a framework to provide social emotional learning for our students. It provides effective management in the classroom, positive school community, developmentally responsive instruction, and engaging academics. And I'm pleased now to share with you a video that Dr. G. produced along with Amanda Trevel and Bob Anderson from HHTV.
Are you getting any sound now?
Yeah, just turn it up a little bit.
You have to turn it up locally. That's it is already at max volume.
Welcome to Simmons Elementary. Today, we're going to feature ways that our staff and students are creating positive connections with one another during these unusual times when some days we're all learning remotely from home, some days half of us are at school and the other half are at home, and the fact that we're constantly shifting based on our local health conditions. No matter what's going on, our teachers focus on the social emotional well-being of our students and using the responsive classroom strategies woven throughout the day to build a community that is safe, welcoming, and supportive for every student.
Her favorite place is California. Her goal is to be a nice person, but I'll tell you right now, she's already a nice person. Her birthday?
We're starting to study biographies of famous people. So we started talking about how you get information about a famous for anybody and starts sometimes with an interview if the person's still alive. So weaving that with our building our classroom community is they came up with interview questions for a classmate. They are going to make that into a seesaw activity, take a picture of their partner, write three or four sentences to put around their picture, and record what they learned about that person. And then we're going to share with each other the interviews so that they can all get to know one another. For those of the kids that are at home and the ones that are here, these different cohorts, they know one another from being virtual, but this way they'll get to know each other even a little bit better.
Number three, what's the meaning of the word "group" page 192, using your context clues?
The great thing about having them dial in is that they can get the main lesson that I'm teaching without being on the computer all day long. So I have my students dial in to the team's meeting during my shared reading lesson. So it's about 45 minutes after our morning meeting they stay on and we do a shared reading lesson and both at-home kids and the kids in school get the same lesson. But I love having these guys at home log in so that they can feel a part of the classroom when they're really not in here. So I think that that's great that they can be a part of it from home when they're not necessarily, when they're not here.
In order for the kids at home to really be able to do some of the experiments with each other because part of the experiment is talking to each other, I put the kids into breakout rooms. So they go into the team's meeting, the kids at home and the kids at school, and I put them with their desk buddy in a breakout room. So it's just the two of them. The children at our school have headphones on, so they can hear the kids at home. And they are showing them the hands-on experiment and they're just discussing it with the child at home. So what we usually do in third grade is like a turn and talk or a group experiment together, which we can't do now. So this kind of allows them to talk to a classmate while they're doing the experiment. This might be a way to get all of that in without having to double experiment, do one in school one day and then do the same experiment the next day.
What I'm most proud of in Haverhill Horsum and at Simmons in particular is that what you see as you walk through our building is teachers being really creative and looking for opportunities to rethink what learning looks like, what is teaching and learning. And so they're looking at their science lessons and they're rethinking, how do I make this group project? How do I make it so that kids are able to connect with one another? And you also see that in the way in which they are building, building community in their classrooms, the way in which they use morning meeting and interactive modeling and approach those connections that they know need to occur between students.
I love doing the morning meeting with both kids at home and at school. Even though they're not together, I feel like when we do our sharing, like today we shared, if you could live anywhere in the world, where would you live? Some friend said the beach, Hawaii, Sea Isle City. So they were able to go off with each other. Oh, I'd want to go with Zach to California. So Zach's at home, but Haley's here. So they're able to kind of build that community together even though they're not in the same place. I think it's really awesome that they can still share that even though they're not all together.
My morning meeting, we were playing Scatagories in breakout rooms and I was with Connor who's at home and Caitlin who's here at school. Because I have friends at home that I don't normally get to see and I get to see them during team meetings.
In, in the socially distant kindergarten, doing interactive modeling or just modeling in general is a little bit different than when we were all together and there could be a group and we were sitting kind of closer together and observing one person do the activity. Now we're spread out, so there are opportunities where they get to see me or we have a star student every day that comes to the front and models things that we're expecting students to do. The change from traditional kindergarten to this new setting for kindergarten where we're socially distant doesn't have as many opportunities for the students to move and get up and kind of get together or move across the classroom. So we've put in breaks that are, some are active, like the ones we were doing with the cardio drumming with the noodles, or we were ice skating with paper plates to a freeze dance. So they were actually working on listening skills at the same time for both of those things. And then at the end, we started to use our busy box, which is just in between activities or if someone's a finisher and is finished a few minutes before the rest of the group, it's something that they can work on.
We hope you've enjoyed your visit to Simmons and that you've had the opportunity to witness how our teachers and students are working together to strengthen our school community, build relationships, and form those important connections that happen in an elementary school every day.
Thank you. That was great. Up next, we have Crooked Billit fifth grade teacher Melissa Pierce.
Evening, everyone. Tonight, I am excited to introduce Mrs. Melissa Pierce. Mrs. Pierce is a fifth grade teacher at Crooked Billit and tonight she will be presenting to all of you a thematic unit that she has developed for fifth grade students. This unit focuses on identity, social justice, and action. And now I will turn it over to Mrs. Pierce. Thank you very much. While I'm sharing my screen, thank you all for being, letting me come today and talk with you guys. I'm really excited to share this unit with you. It's something that has taken a few years of planning to put together and I've been fortunate enough to now be in my second year of using, using all of these social comprehension lessons with my fifth graders. So to start, some of you know me because some of you actually, your children have been in my class before at Penny Pack. Some of you have actually been able to come in and work with my students as well and know that for the longest time I taught third grade. And I had the opportunity to kind of grow as an educator a few years ago and make a switch to a different grade level. And so when I moved to fifth grade, one of the things I really wanted to do was be very purposeful in the design of my year, the design of the lessons that I was doing with these fifth graders. Because I know that all of our students in our district are coming from these great little communities and these smaller schools. And then they all go into this like mix up at Keith Valley and they, they see different people and they learn about different people and they're not with their little families anymore. So I really wanted to take it upon myself to create lessons for them and units for them to really build up their, their self-esteem, the way they think about themselves, the way they think about the world as they kind of go into Keith Valley. And so to do this, I broke our trimester up into three, which makes sense, our future trimesters, and really started with identity. Identity was like kind of the, the starting point. It is the building block for everything that I had them do in the school year. Moving into trimester two, we look at a lot of different social justice issues, things to open their minds up now that they feel comfortable within themselves, kind of showing them other things that are out there in our community, things that are in the world. And then eventually into trimester three, really showing them what action looks like. How can students their age take action and do something about what they're passionate about? And so I want to kind of break down each of those for you. Trimester one is, like I said, all about identity. And the unit itself really focuses on the students' own personal identities. And it's really important for them to kind of grow with each other and to learn and better understand their world around them by sharing their identities, learning about the identities of the students in the classroom with them. And one of my kind of favorite quotes that I always go back to is Smokey Daniels, who is kind of a well-known author and teacher in the world of kind of educational pedagogy. And he said that a commitment to knowing and caring about a person's identity is the road to empathy. And that's really what we start off with in the beginning of our school year, forming the community. We talk about responsive classrooms a lot in our school district. And really, the whole first trimester in, in my classroom is that, is that road to empathy and learning how to understand one another, understand each other's identities and where we came from. And then the other thing I really love, and I want to point this out because I think it's so important sometimes for kids because a lot of times our students sometimes feel like they, they can't have a say and they don't have a word of their own. And a lot of us adults tend to kind of tell them what they should be or what they can be. And I think that this identity unit really gives them a chance. It tells them that when we give students the floor to say who they are and what that means to them, they are less likely to allow someone else to do it for them. And I think that if I can get these students by the end of the year to really know who they are and express who they are with other people, then they're not allowing someone else to tell them who they are. And one thing that I use in this unit that I wanted to just share, it's a great resource and I know other teachers in our district are using it as well because I see a lot of these lessons in other buildings and people sharing things on Twitter, is this wonderful book called Being the Change. And it's by Sarah K. Ahmed and I have used it multiple times for great lessons, Identity webs, stories of their name. And I had the opportunity this summer to be in a very small group virtual workshop with her and she's actually teaching fifth grade this year as well and was able to learn a lot of wonderful strategies from her. So what does that look like in my classroom? What is the nitty gritty? So in my classroom, what this looks like is what you see on the board here. We do a lot of identity work with heart maps. The kids, they make kind of circles and they put all of their identity around there, things that are meaningful to them, where they came from. Students are writing things like, I'm an athlete, or I'm a second child, or I can speak multiple languages, things that are really important to them and their identity. And we work with that throughout the year. We also use a lot of authentic memoir texts. What's really important when choosing certain texts for this type of kind of unit or even these, all of these units together and the lessons within, are choosing things that are going to be inspiring for the students in my class that are going to show them what other students look like around the world, look like in their communities, and giving them the chance to kind of model after the great authors that I'm able to select and the wonderful books that I'm able to provide for them in the classroom. And so we go through all of these mentor texts and eventually the kids end up writing their own memoirs. And we do a whole lesson on teaching them how to write memoirs, how to look at their identity and who they are and write the stories of their life. And so up here you can see in the corner, this was a beautiful story written by one of my students from last year. And it was kind of a heart-wrenching story that she was so proud to share with the class about her family leaving Ecuador and coming to the United States for the first time. And it was a moving day when she shared that with us. And I think that with all of the identity work that we do, the kids become so comfortable with each other that they feel comfortable sharing, which is really beautiful to see. The other thing that we work on a lot is character analysis and we use these beautiful books. We use the story, The Bridge Home, which all of our Crooked Billit family and my other two teachers that worked with me this year were able to do and it was phenomenal. And we learn about children from all over the world and look at their memoirs and how we can kind of analyze their sense and their, their identity to find out more about them and then compare it to us. So you can see some of the work that they've done this year on the page here. Another one of my favorite projects is the six-word memoir. So after they write their lengthy memoirs and their stories of themselves, I challenge them to try to write something really meaningful about themselves using only six words. And so you can see two examples on the page here, "Head in the Clouds, Never Out," and "Lost Her Dad, Found Her Spirit." So just in a few short words, you can really get into the identity of some of these students and it's beautiful to watch. Then we move into the second trimester and once we kind of get that foundation of their identity, who they are, why they're proud of themselves, where they came from, their family, we move into social justice. So this is kind of where we are right now and what we're working on in the school year. And I think this is really important for students, even at a young age in elementary school, to understand that social justice is important to our communities and to the world around us. And the way we do that is by looking at the fact that it's the view that everyone deserves equal economic, political, and social rights and opportunities. And that's kind of how I frame it for them. And we look at lots of little pieces of what that looks like. And it's really important that, to learn about the problems that dramatically affect and impact the quality of life of populations around the world and our community. And we really need to teach it because at this young age, before they go up into some of these bigger classes, we need to teach them to be responsible citizens and participate in society and be active. And so one of the great resources that we use, that I use as part of this and some of the amazing lessons that I pull from are from teachingtolerance.org. And I know that as a district, we are also using a lot of those lessons to kind of bring some other things into the classrooms across other grade levels. And it's a phenomenal resource of like vetted, great lessons and social justice issues. So what does that look like in my classroom? Here's some of the topics. We start off with some equality and race and ethnicity. And I like to use things, not just, not just literature to teach this. I like to use paintings and I like to use poetry. And so we start off with the painting you see on the board there. It's the Norman Rockwell painting of Moving Day, New Kids in the Neighborhood. And we really get into the author's point of view and what that looks like. We talk about food insecurities. Last year, I was able to, along with my grade level partner, Dr. Bob Catman, work with our students to also do a food drive during that time. And so understanding how food insecurity works in our communities, what we can do for our community and the action that we can take. We look at bias and gender stereotypes. And this is a big topic for kids in fifth grade. I think a lot of fifth graders, this topic really hits home for them. And we, and we've kind of finished that unit or that part of the unit with these beautiful poems that the students write after we look at some other poetry. For instance, from the book Woke, A Young Poet's Call to Justice, we look at some poetry from Maya Angelou and they eventually write what's called a "just because" poem. And so on the board here are two "just because" poems that two of my students created last year. We haven't gotten to that point yet in this trimester, but I'm very excited for this point. But I just wanted to read to you guys just so that you can kind of hear some of the amazing work by our fifth graders in our school district. This one is "Just Because." "Just because I am a girl doesn't mean I can play, can't play football. Doesn't mean I can't play video games. Doesn't mean I can't help my family. I am invincible. Just because I am sick doesn't mean I can't live happily. Doesn't mean I can't be a great older sister. Doesn't mean I can't see far. I am strong. Just because I am sometimes a follower doesn't mean I can't be a leader. Doesn't mean I can't inspire others. Doesn't mean I always follow the rules. I am a leader that follows my own path, not someone else's. Just because I am Christian doesn't mean I go to church every Sunday. Doesn't mean I don't mess up. Doesn't mean I am crazy about my God. I am a believer." And so to have nine and 10-year-olds and 11-year-olds in your classroom reciting this poetry is so moving. But again, it's the foundation that I'm able to kind of build with the identity unit and then moving into some of these powerful topics that we use. I also incorporate a lot of informational articles, primary sources. That is a big thing that we use in my classroom. They get a chance to analyze and look at the letters from Birmingham Jail, which I feel like don't often get used as much in schools to look at. And so they really get to look at those things and look at the words that are spoken in those letters and bring it into their poetry. And then lastly, in our final trimester, we move into action. And so in this trimester, I really would like the students to look at what they've learned about themselves, look at what they became passionate about in their second trimester with the social justice issues they learned, and figure out what to do about it. So we talk a lot about how do you plan and carry out action against a social justice issue and the injustices in our world or even in our own community. And so one of the ways that we do that is looking at how they can focus on what needs to be changed, their claim, who has the power to change it? Who is their audience? And this is a big part of the last trimester is really audience. Who do we need to talk to to make the change that's important to us? And what kind of format should that come in? And so we look at a lot, again, a lot of authentic texts, a lot of mentor texts. For instance, here's a few, Free as a Bird, The Story of Malala, and this beautiful story, I Can Write the World by Josunda Sanders. And this is a wonderful one and I always like to show this other article you can see at the bottom. This was an actual article, it's a true story of some fifth graders that were defending their South Shore neighborhood. And we use that as a mentor text as well, actually analyzing the work of their, you know, age-appropriate peers in some other places around the world. And so they look at what type of format, they write letters, they write speeches. Students have discussed creating their own graphic novels that they can share their social justice issues in our school libraries for other students to read. And so it's kind of endless what they can do. I never put a limit on how they would like to kind of show or the format they use to show their social justice issue that they choose. And so just kind of leave you guys, I found this quote that I really love and it really embodies the reason I created this unit the way it is, is kids really have a lot more power than they think they have. They have the power to change the world and they should know it. And the whole purpose of how I plan my school year out with my students is I want them to know that they have the power. I want them to feel comfortable within themselves in their identity unit. I want them to branch out to learn new things in the social justice unit. And I want them to know that they can make a difference in our world in the last unit called Action. And so hopefully altogether, when these kind of build upon each other, we're really creating students that are going into middle school feeling confident, feeling like they know who they are and they're ready to stand up for who they are and they're ready to kind of take on the world and what they believe in. And so that is kind of how I've structured my unit in fifth grade. And I'm very lucky that this year I have a couple grade level partners that are jumping in with me. And so we're able to work together with all of our students at Crooked Billit to kind of really have an awesome year. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And up next, we have the presentation from Hatter Academy teacher Rachel Hartman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us to present. I am very excited to introduce one of Hatter Academy's fourth grade teachers, Mrs. Rachel Hartman, who is on loan from Halliwell, but I am very appreciative of that because she is incredible. She takes chances and really is a student-centered teacher by all means. So I'm not going to give away what she's doing because I'd like you to walk through it. So without further ado, I introduce Mrs. Rachel Hartman.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm just going to take a moment to get my PowerPoint up. Okay. Okay, so thanks for giving me that moment. First, thank you for having me here tonight to share this project. I'm really excited to share it with you. The activity that I'm sharing with you today is one of the many learning opportunities that I will share with my students during Black History Month. I call it Where in the World is Mrs. Hartman? It's just been on Where in the World is Carmen Sandiego? And I, I don't know if, if anyone remembers that from back in the day. So this is, okay, the project. So each learning experience is set up as an escape room. So for those of you who are not familiar with escape rooms, it's an event where the participants involved need to solve riddles and problems to actually escape the room. What it looks like in a school situation is that the kids, my fourth graders, will use clues like riddles, maps, primary and secondary sources to figure out some information about where I am and the significance of the location. Once they figure out exactly where I am, the students will identify and analyze the significance of that location in the framework of Black history. This activity integrates history, geography, and social justice. Additionally, the students will learn how to identify keywords in the riddle that they have to use, that they have to search for help figuring out what they're looking for. And that is a skill that they can take with them forever. And also how to use reputable sources online. So far, I've created six of these escape rooms. I'm hoping to create more as time goes on. So this project will be implemented as a small group activity. The kids will be in breakout rooms with adult support, at least for the beginning. They'll engage in these activities one or two times per week and each escape room is supported and by follow-up teacher instruction and class discussion. So each activity will take about 45 minutes. And they will have to figure out the answers to all of the riddles. So my rationale for this project is, first of all, to teach Black history in a way that's engaging and meaningful for all students, to encourage students to have conversations about Black history, and also to allow the children to problem solve together to achieve a common goal. These are the social justice standards that I pulled from the resource that Melissa mentioned. It's a website called teachingtolerance.org. I'll give you a minute to look over those. It's a website called teachingtalents.org. I'll give you a minute to look over those. And then, these are the locations and events that I covered in the escape rooms that I created. These locations are significant and powerful for Black people and their history. These places may have... There may have been violence or strife in these locations, but I really want to focus on the growth and the change that occurred in these locations. I'll make sure to highlight that when teaching my students because even though the events were significant and important for the kids to know about, I also feel that they need to understand that change was made and that there is a lot to learn about those locations. So I thought we would try one together so that you can have a little bit of an idea of what it looks like. So I am gonna click on this link here. Up here. Okay, so Where in the World is Mrs. Hartman? The first question, I'm gonna put my name in because we need a name. So each activity is in the format of a form, a Google form. There is always a map for the kids to figure out where I am. And then there are clues. So the clue for this one is surrounded by six states. In the middle it is, no coast for the state, be a geography with. The name of the state is spelled differently than it sounds. Within the state's name, another state's name can be found. So if I scroll up and show you the map, does anyone want to take a guess where I am?
Arkansas.
It is Arkansas. So I'm gonna walk through the first one with the kids. I think it's important for them to be able to pick out what are the clues.
Wait, 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 who answered that?
Well, the kids will.
No, 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 I mean, in this meeting, who answered that?
Ben Wilson.
Okay. I thought so. I just wanted to make sure.
I was stumped already, so.
So the kids would have some time to go through the clues and try to figure out which state it is. They have the map to reference, so Arkansas is the answer for the first question. So the next one. Now they have to figure out which city I'm in. So for each of the escape rooms, there's a map of the state with the cities inside. And then there's the next riddle named after a landmark called French Rock and full of history. One of our recent presidents lived there, and it's no mystery. The city located right smack dab in the middle of the state, the Arkansas River and Trail, museums and parks are great. So does anyone want to take a guess? You need to move back. I can move back up. There we go.
Was it Little Rock?
It is Little Rock. So the kids will type in Little Rock. Okay, so now they have to figure out where exactly I am and why I'm there. Okay, so the next set of clues. There's a clue, and then there are also pictures, photographs, primary and secondary sources that the kids can look at. And they have to pick out the keywords and the information from the pictures to identify where I am and why I'm there. So these are the clues. So Daisy Bates and her husband lived in this home, a haven for the Little Rock Nine students to roam. They came here to get picked up and dropped off from Central High School where some white folks would stop. Today, the house stands a historic site where Brown versus Board of Education decision was made right. People protested the desegregation of schools, but the president and the troops he sent enforced the rule. So then they scroll down. They have the clues that are in the riddle, but they also have pictures, newspaper articles, more photographs, that's a picture of the actual house that was referenced in the riddle. And their job is to study the clues. My emoji is there to encourage them to figure out exactly what the location is and why I'm there. So does anyone want to guess? Does anyone know exactly where I am? This is a tricky one. Move back up.
Feel like I'm on Jeopardy.
Well, I can give you the answer if you're not sure.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, it's actually the Daisy Bates house. Daisy Bates was, she helped the Little Rock Nine to get to and from school in a safe manner. So I'm gonna click now. And then, at the end, I have some informational videos that the kids can watch to learn more about that location and the people involved. And then I also have kind of a reflective question for them to answer, which I'm not gonna ask for you to do today. And then this would be followed up by class discussion, you know, questions that the kids can ask. And we would engage in conversation about the events and the pictures and the other things that they saw. So, are there any... So there are six of them. We're gonna get started this week. I'm really excited. So thank you so much for letting me share my little project.
Thank you so much. Now, Where in the World is Carmen Sandiego is one of my favorite shows I used to watch. So I'm right there with you. Thank you very much. And Dr. Taylor, thank you for putting all those presentations together and inviting everyone in for the presentations today.
You're welcome.
And now we move on to public comment. So this is the time for public wishing to make a comment on any agenda items. Please state your name, address, and municipality of residence. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you wish to make a comment at this point, you can raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand button in Zoom, or you can hit star nine on your phone. That will alert the meeting host that you wish to speak. And when's your turn, you will be changed to a speaking role and prompted on the call that it is your turn to speak. Do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment about agenda items?
I guess I see some... Had their hands or hands.
I apologize. Okay, I am all set here. First up, we have Justin Ginhardt. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Justin Ginhardt. First, I'd like to say thank you to the teachers for putting the presentation.
Echoing a line.
Showing, showing, you know, how they are able to have kids.
I'm not hearing an echo on my end. Is anyone else hearing an echo? I'm sorry, Justin, I'll stop your timer.
Yes, we will.
Very echo, yes.
All right, Justin, go ahead and unmute and try again.
All right, test, test. Am I still getting an echo?
Yes, yes.
It shouldn't be on my headphones. Mic on, mic on.
I think we're all getting an echo if we're speaking now.
Yeah, I hear an echo on everyone.
Except you, too.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and mute numerous people here. Everybody except Justin, then I will mute myself. Justin, I'm gonna remute you. All right, I'm gonna mute myself. Justin, go ahead and try again and...
Okay, if everything's good, I'll wait till the timer starts.
Is that better for people on the call? Are you still echoing? I'm not hearing an echo, so.
Echoing still.
Yeah, I can hear it in my headphones. I can hear my echo. But it's not just me, correct?
Correct. Correct.
All right, Justin, I'm gonna disable talking and then re-enable you in just a second. Is anyone still... Are you hearing the echo when I talk? Because I am literally the only person unmuted at this point.
No, you're clear.
Okay. All right, everybody, remute, and let's... Let me try Justin one more time. Justin, go ahead.
All right, check, check. Oh, man. I wonder if it's on my end.
Did you change the video?
No, I didn't change any settings. It's a strange part. And if everybody else is echoing, then that means somebody is picking up.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Just talking to Greg.
Oh, okay, okay.
Setting, setting. The video, video.
No, I don't believe so. Let me stop sharing and reshare. But no, there shouldn't have been. Let's try it again. Same sharing. Justin, go ahead and try again.
All right, let's see here. Can you hear me?
Yes, and there's no echo.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, so I knew there's gonna be two comment sections, so I'm gonna limit my comments to just directly what we saw. One, I thought was really great to see these presentations. I'm glad to see what my kids are doing in the classroom. I really liked the Simmons presentation. That was great. The one thing I do want to point out about it is actually, I think that demonstrated the perfect opportunity for us to move toward a five-day model with choices for parents to keep their kids home because it shows that we can have kids in school. And for those kids, whether it be from medical necessity or family necessity, can't come in due to coronavirus, they can do the teacher call-in. I believe call-ins, that's actually a really cool technology. So if we do actually move into a five-day model, if we're able to do that sooner rather than later, we still have the ability to give the parents who aren't comfortable a choice. So that's one thing that I wanted to say. In relation to that, I think that could be extremely helpful. Another thing that I have concerns, and I want to try to put this as lightly as possible about the second presentation. When the presentation started, Smokey Daniels was brought up, and that kind of rang in my head because I pay attention to a lot of current events. And I'll get to why in a second, but it's just the presentation itself. It concerns me that it may be overtly political due to the ages of the kids. The reason I say this is because Smokey Daniels on January 10th, I had to double-check because I remember seeing this, actually shared that he called a US sitting senator a traitor. So I'm concerned about that aspect being taught in our class. I understand that it's good to learn about diversity. I am not taking that away, and I do not want to disparage, you know, all of our kids from learning about the different aspects of the world. I just want to make sure that we're not getting a one-sided or so far an indoctrinated view of it. I'm trying to keep it as professional as I can because I was a little perturbed on some of that. And also, I've heard of the poem book Woke. And again, it seems like it's a very one-sided thing. So I do understand what's going on, but it's just concerning to me. So that's all I have for these agenda items. I really appreciate you. Let me speak.
All right, next up, we have Justin Heath. You are able to unmute, Justin. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well, enjoying the snow and staying safe. First and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Cantor for her presentation. I thought it was phenomenal. It was great to see the way that your school is being consistent across the board with the inclusion of all children. I think that's paramount in the world that we are in right now, in the climate that we're in. Secondly, I think the presentation that Melissa gave and the other teacher was great to see as a whole, so I appreciate that. I want to reflect on Ms. Cantor's presentation and what Simmons is doing to kind of lead the pack, if you say. It's clear to me that not all the schools in the district are on the same page. I would love to see my child's elementary school get on board and do a lot of the same things that Simmons seems to be doing. I know there are some challenges with technology, but I fully believe that we do have the capability to include all kids in different styles of learning. And what we saw tonight, and what we witnessed tonight, was one school giving the ability for all children to learn in a capacity where they feel most comfortable. I can say unequivocally that is not happening across the board. It's eye-opening. I know that it's challenging. And the best thing that can happen out of tonight is the conversation around giving parents the ability to choose what's best for their child. So I'll say that, and I do have a question. And I would hope that this gets addressed as I have less than a minute. I'd like to know if the school district is accurately sharing the number of COVID cases that are being reported in each individual school. I think that's paramount, that the public knows exactly what's going on and what's being discussed behind the scenes. And secondly, I'd like there to be an opportunity for not only the parents in the district, but our hard-working teachers to be able to take a survey and give them the ability to voice their opinion on what they ideally see as what's best for a return to school. We do have some hard topics to discuss, but there are a lot of us out there that do want to see our struggling children who want to be back in school five days a week as an option. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Clarice Schellinger. Again, please remember to state your name and address when you start speaking. But Clarice, you can unmute and start your comment.
Thank you, Greg. Clarice Schellinger, 9 Bayberry Circle, Ambler. So I really did very much appreciate Karen's presentation tonight. It just really brought light to me that it just showed the children just really enjoying being in class and with their teachers. And as I know that everyone on this call knows that I am an advocate for five days a week in-person instruction. But what does concern me really from my heart is our teachers. And I have many friends that are teachers within this district that are working nights, they're working weekends, they're working...
I'm sorry, but does this have to do with the presentation?
I just said, I just said.
Yeah, but now...
I'm speaking about Karen's presentation.
No, you're not. You're talking about teachers, and they're working. And you're not speaking to the agenda items.
The item was during the open public comment section. Real quick, this is...
And items only. Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to continue, please, because I was speaking about the video, just as Justin just did. So the video showed overtime and how much work our teachers are having to put in to manage kids at home and kids at school.
Okay. Alright, next we have, uh, Shelby Pagano. Uh, hold on, let me reset the timer. Uh, alright, uh, Shelby, you can go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, my name is Shelby Pagano. I live at 1224 Noble Page Lane, officially Ambler, but Horsham Township. Um, I just wanted to comment, I wasn't sure what the presentations would be about tonight and it was, as a parent in the district, I, I loved seeing all three of them. Um, anyone who knows me knows Simmons is near and dear to my heart. My youngest just finished there and it was great to see so many familiar faces doing incredible things, which I'm gonna tell you doesn't surprise me in the least. Um, many of the teachers that I saw taught my own kids or I observed them as an HSA member. So I'm happy to see everything continuing and it was just nice to see all of you on camera. Um, and the next two presentations were from teachers that I'm not familiar with. But wow, any kid in this district would be lucky to sit through those curriculums. Um, I, I was just super impressed and grateful to live in a district where our kids are getting that quality of education. So that's it. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, that is all the hands that I see raised currently.
Okay, uh, moving on to the review of the minutes from the January 19th, 2021 meeting. If you could just share those on the screen there. So there's no vote on this. It's just a review of the meetings, you know, everybody that's present. Um, we had the presentation on the budget. Uh, we had the different highlights from that presentation. There was no public comment, the first section, we approved the minutes from the December. We had our consent agenda items. Uh, we had the action items on the reopening of school, um, with the health and safety plan had to be re-approved. Uh, we had some human resource action items that we voted on, um, special services items, office action items. We did have to vote on some of those items separately there. And then we had all of our committee reports. And our liaison reports. And second public comment section, which we had no comments at, and we had a couple of comments from uh, board members, um, and we adjourned the meeting at 8:16.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Uh, we, we don't need to approve them. I will approve them next meeting because this is a non... Um, now we move on to any items for consideration. There are no items for consideration. Um, now this is the second public comment section. Um, you can speak about anything, uh, during this comment section. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand by using the raise hand function or star nine on your phone. Um, that will alert the meeting because that you wish to speak. When you, it's your turn to speak, the presenter will, um, make you the presenter and tell you that it's your turn to speak. Uh, please make sure you state your name, address, and municipality of residence. Um, speaking is limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, first up is Justin Gindhart. Uh, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Alright, thank you, Greg. Uh, Justin Gindhart, 29 Beryl Staves Circle. Uh, I guess you guys probably know that because I speak a lot. Um, yeah, just a few things I wanted to touch on real quick, um, related to some of the kind of coronavirus response we've been doing. A couple of quick points. Um, one thing I do want to talk about is the vaccine as it's been rolling out. I want to make sure that we aren't going to use this as yet another goalpost for requirements to return the five-day in-person education. Um, I've been following along since we've started establishing goalposts, whether it be percent of infections and, and Dr. Evans has been good about presenting a lot of the information. It's just it gets very confusing. And it seems like once we meet one, we wind up shifting to the next. So I just want to make sure that vaccines, numbers of vaccines, et cetera, aren't going to be used in that manner because unfortunately, that would be a ridiculously long time. Um, another big one I wanted to talk about is I'd like to see if the union would be willing to get, put out a statement on their, um, stance as of today. If they would return to full-time in-person immediately or not, and, and reason why. I think we all need to be transparent about our intentions about this, both staff, administration, union, and the parents. So we can all come together, figure out where the issue is and get our kids back in school. Um, uh, I would actually also, another thing if to take into consideration, maybe a possible question and answer session in person with the administration and the parents. Um, I know we have very large gymnasiums and auditoriums and if we can go to a giant box store like Walmart or Target and spend a couple hours in there, then I'm sure we can all get together to have an in-person discussion because this is very impersonal. I'm, I'm talking to a screen. It'd be nice to be able to talk to a person, uh, and, and maybe get feedback. And, um, one other thing that really concerns me, are we gonna be able to meet the 180-day requirement for our students this year? Because with the three asynchronous days, I mean, that, that's time that the kids aren't, to my understanding, that's time when the kids are not actually interacting with a teacher or being taught. So does that count as being taught time? Are we losing time? Because I know it's either days or hours, depending on how long the quote day goes. So I want to make sure that are we actually going to meet the requirement we have because of all this changing, shifting and all that? So that's what I have. So thank you for allowing me to comment. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we have Cara Mundell or Mundel. I'm sorry, on the, oh, nope, just put the hand down. Uh, so next we have Cindy 215-514-0464. Uh, please remember to state your name, address, and municipality, uh, and you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I missed the, um, presentations at the beginning. I was doing school with my grandson there via Face, FaceTime because the work was here and he was there. So, um, I apologize for running in late. So if I ask something that was covered, please let me know. One of my big questions...
Can you please state your name, address?
I'm so sorry. Cindy Weinrich, 639 Chatsworth Drive, Ambler, PA. I'm in Tallamore. My grandson attends Simmons. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Jennifer. Uh, my question to everyone is, if in fact things remain as they are right now, which we are all hoping it doesn't, the classroom size, physical square feet, is not going to change between now in June or between now in September. We have the same square footage that we had two years ago, we have now. And my big concern is what's gonna happen if we can still only have, even for the rest of the school year, once things progress a little bit farther along and more people are vaccinated? What percentage of the staff do we need vaccinated before we can get more kids back in school? That's my question. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Clarice Schillinger. You can go ahead and, sorry, let me reset the timer. Alright, you can go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, Clarice Schillinger, Nine Bayberry Circle, Ambler. Uh, four, four questions. Number one, has a waiver been approved with the Pennsylvania Department of Education to continue the flexible instruction days? So the 180 days. Um, I know that there was a blanket of, on the 2019, 2000, or 2020 school year, but have we as Hattborough Horsham submitted, uh, this waiver for approval to have these flexible instruction days as Justin Gindhart men- mentioned with the 180 days? Um, I, I certainly hope so because if not, um, it's not legal. Number two, um, the WHO, the CDC, and the PA Department of Health all suggest six feet distancing. But in that six feet distancing recommendation and what is being missed, missed and not delivered to the community, is this recommendation is six feet distancing as much as feasible? As much as feasible is key. So as the lady that spoke earlier, just before me, um, the school, you know, the classrooms aren't getting any bigger. So are we going to start implementing the six feet distancing as much as feasible as directed by the WHO, CDC, and the PA Department of Health? Number three, will parents be presented with another survey? I know that we did the survey back in the fall with the majority of parents saying that they did want to return five days a week in-person instruction. Um, just to get another pulse on the community and where they stand, I really believe that another survey for parents should be conducted. And when I was interrupted in my comment before, I also think that we should survey the teachers. The teachers are very overworked. They're, you know, having to work overtime with trying to juggle both hybrid virtual kids, this kid in the classroom, this kid out of the classroom. We're really putting a lot on parents, teachers, students when I really think that this could all be solved with following the guidelines from the WHO and the CDC and the Penn, the Pennsylvania Department of Health using the six feet distancing as much as feasible. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we have, uh, Cara Mundell. Uh, hand is raised again, so I'm gonna allow you to speak. You can unmute. Um, please remember to state your name and address, uh, before making your comment.
Uh, hello, it's actually, um, Alex Mundell and I live on, uh, Glen Devon Drive in Ambler, PA. Um, I'm extremely disappointed with the school board and neglects the voices of the students and parents that speak at these meetings. I, on behalf of the students at Keith Valley, urge you to bring us back in, into full-person schooling. The private Catholic schools have been doing it all year and these, and they've seen no issues so far. Our students are depressed, exhausted, and outraged because we have been trying really hard to get through this online school. Students need structure to succeed. I personally am struggling in three of my classes because of the lack of structure our school schedule provi- our school schedule provides. I beg that the school board takes our feelings into consideration and provides us with the consistent, a consistently full in-person schedule. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have, uh, the Gas family. Uh, that's how it's listed in Zoom. You can go ahead and unmute and speak. Please again, remember to state your name and address.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much. This is David Gas. I live at 468 Barrington Street in Horsham. Uh, we have three children in the district, one in eighth, one in fifth, and one in second grade. Uh, we really just wanted to take this opportunity to first and foremost thank the teachers. We think they're doing an amazing job in a impossible situation, um, as much as we all want, you know, uh, to get back to quote-unquote "normal." Uh, we understand that these decisions are impossible ones and that no matter what the decision is made, that someone out there will have an issue with it. Uh, we also want to thank the school board. You know, you guys put in a lot of work, uh, and you know, we believe again that the decisions that you're making are, are not easy ones and that, you know, you have our children's best interests in mind and the teacher's best interests in mind. And we like to just thank you for all the work that you've, you've done. Uh, while we as a family would love to be back in-person full-time, we understand that, uh, that's maybe not possible for everyone. Uh, our kids have, have done, uh, very well, thank goodness, in this situation. Uh, we believe that it's really taught them a lot of resiliency. You know, they've bounced back probably better than, than we have and for the most part, um, but really nothing else other than, again, thank you, teachers, school board. Uh, you guys are doing great work. Uh, continue. Uh, I think the presentations today showed what, what great school district we live in. Uh, we're proud to be here. We're proud for our kids to be in these schools and we'd like to, to thank you again. So appreciate everything you do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there are no more hands raised. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, there is, uh, one more hand raised. Uh, Justin Heath. Uh, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Justin Heath, I live at 5 Fawn Lane, uh, speaking for two households here tonight. Um, and the last commenter made some really important points. Um, and I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that everyone in the community is trying to do what they feel is best for their own child. We understand a lot of the decisions that are being made by the school board, Dr. Apes Lodge, um, and company, you know, with the decisions that we're faced with now due to the pandemic. Um, my personal viewpoint is, is that a lot of voices are not being heard. Um, a lot of people are nervous to speak up. Um, there are a lot of great ideas out there that we could all, um, you know, bring to the forefront of conversation. This is what it's about, is having open dialogue. Nobody wants to see anybody be contentious. Um, rude to anybody. We're just trying to find a solution uh, for those that are looking for more choice for their personal family. So I want to reiterate that. Um, I've had two, uh, one-on-one meetings with the superintendent. I thought they were fantastic. Um, you know, not entirely, uh, the direction that I was hoping for. I'm hoping to continue that. Uh, I know a lot of other people have also met with the superintendent and others. Um, but we really need to keep these lines of communication open. We're looking for answers. Uh, there's a lot of questions out there. And, and we're really relying on you to, to help guide us through this process and and really take into account a lot of what we have to say. Um, at the end of the day, it, it's not easy. We understand that. Um, but our kids are the most important aspect in all of this. That's what our primary focus should be, be on entirely. Um, and we really need to take into account what the teachers have to say. We want to hear from them. We don't want their voices being silenced uh, by the union at all or by other members, uh, on the board. We need, we need them. They're very important. And, um, you know, I'm just hoping for more transparency and a little bit more openness in terms of the choices that are being given to us, uh, as we currently sit right now. So, um, you know, my position stands. I'd love to be involved in the, in the conversation to kind of come up with a solution that's beneficial for everyone and not taking away uh, things that are working for the families that are in the community as we speak now.
Thank you. Lower hand. Alright, uh, next we have MJ. Uh, again, please remember to state your name and your full name and address. Uh, but MJ, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
This is Mike Joyce, 112 Draward Avenue, Hattborough, Pennsylvania. Um, I think the presentation the teachers did today was very nice. Gave us a good snapshot of what's going on in the classroom. But, um, the next board meeting, I think it's, um, imperative that we start discussing plans for what we're gonna do next year to open the schools up, where we could have the kids in school five days a week. I'd like to see a discussion talked about starting school early, maybe in the beginning of August or mid-August, so that maybe we could beat another outbreak like we had this year during the holidays. I know that's been done at a, several schools in the area, including one my son goes to, which is a private school, and it worked out pretty well. Um, I really would like to see the board emphasize what they're going to do next year to get the schools open five days a week. I think that's the most important thing and should be the only objective on the agenda going forward. Thank you.
Alright, uh, there are no, uh, additional hands raised. Uh, so... Alright, uh, there are no uh additional hands raised. Uh, so on to the next part.
Hey, uh, now we move on to comments for board members and Superintendent Dr. Ebbeslog, do you have any comments?
I do, Madam President. Uh, thank you. Um, I actually have a pretty extensive um report and several comments, so. Uh, thank you for your patience and the time. Um, and I thank the individuals who shared a public comment today. Much of this I'll speak to in my my comments now. Um, did want to just respond to a question. That was asked about um whether or not we are meeting state guidelines and I can assure you that the district is taking every step. To assure that we are in compliance with state guidelines as far as paperwork that needs to be completed. And um minutes and days required by the state, so did want to say that. So I have several topics, um. Just gonna start uh quickly with uh snow day clarification and. I know our last couple of days have been somewhat problematic with uh with our weather. Um, but just wanted to give a little bit of context um to to the decisions around snow days. Um, we have one snow day built into the calendar um that we've called the snow day for tomorrow so that they will be fulfilled. Um, today, as you know, was a virtual instruction day. Um, so just wanted to speak a little bit to why the difference. Um, and you know, on a, on a very basic level, we have that one day, so we want to use it as wisely as possible. Um, but when we ask ourselves um with a weather emergency, um, to what extent can we operate our program as scheduled? Uh, you think about that question under normal circumstances, um, you know, a year ago, um, you know, if it snowed. Uh, we'd have to um close school because we're unable to operate on our, on a, unable, excuse me, to operate our program. Uh, now for better or worse, we have the ability to operate our program remotely. Uh, so a day like today, Monday, uh, where we have over ninety percent of our students that were able to experience an instructional day. Uh, much like the one they had scheduled originally, uh, we opted to continue with that. Uh, we could deliver a program today that was relatively comparable to the one we had scheduled. That's not the case for tomorrow. Tomorrow, we're scheduled to bring in uh over fifteen hundred students in person. Uh, that's obviously not going to be. Uh, able to be done with um, with the um snow. Um, so while we hope to resume in-person instruction uh tomorrow, uh can occur. So uh with limited snow days built in. We want to use them on days that we cannot deliver our program. Um, today we could, uh, yes, tomorrow we can't. Uh, so with that, um, that's some of the decision that goes into that. Um, clearly, um, judging by the reaction on the social media posts, uh, people were. Much, much liked, uh, liked the decision today as opposed to the one yesterday. Um, but um, that that has to be understood. So I just wanted to give a little bit of insight into some of the decisions. That we make. Um, with that said, um, that does exhaust our snow days for the year. So if we do have a future weather emergency. Our first, um, our first um option would be to revert to a fully virtual day, uh, if necessary. And I want to just transition, uh, talk a little bit about our our local uh situation and some of the numbers that we've that we've seen. On site since our, since our most recent return to in-person instruction on January eleventh. Uh, in that time, we've been operating under the new state guidance for what would prompt the closure. Uh, we've experienced really terrific attendance from our students, you know, so many kudos to our students. Um, for um, for their resilience through this and their attendance has been great. We've had two building closures uh since the eleventh of two schools that have met the threshold. Uh, both Blair Mill and Halliwell. Thankfully, uh, the timing of those um only resulted in one instructional day. Being transitioned into virtual and that was at Blair Mill. The other one was at Halliwell uh prior to Professional Learning Day, so it did not impact uh student attendance. But um, the day-to-day monitoring um and activity that we have to assess is is very intense as required by the guidelines. Um, we do report that data publicly on the dashboard at four o'clock uh every day. Um, that's after a great deal of consultation throughout the day. If you saw the dashboard, uh, this afternoon, we have thirteen positive cases. Uh, fifty-one staff members and sixty-eight students in quarantine. Um, so that is, you know, we are approaching a problematic level of of staff members quarantine. I'm just gonna talk about that in just a moment. Halliwell had just closed um on Friday and at that point we had four schools that were in yellow or near closure. Um, but this weekend uh was an unfortunate example of how the monitoring of this um has become really a non-stop endeavor. On Sunday, we received a notification of thirty-nine different inquiries, thirty-nine different calls. We fielded on Sunday. Ten positives and twenty-nine additional quarantines that were close contacts. Um, these cases also included Simmons uh meeting the number that would prompt the closure. Um, however, we did have the opportunity to consult with the Office of Public Health. On the cases uh and the situations that are related to these uh school closures. And in this particular case, um, the calendar, although the the weather was unfortunate in many ways. Um, did benefit us in this case. Um, with the gap in time that students were last in the building. Um, last Thursday because we had Friday PD weekend and then a snow days. Uh, and the assurances that we were able to provide that the buildings can be adequately cleaned. Um, we have crews. In uh extra time to ensure that the bill buildings are fogged and clean. Uh, we have been authorized uh by the Office of Public Health to reset our case counts for our buildings. Uh, on Wednesday, uh, when we returned from the snow day. Uh, so that is good news. Um, basically the buildings experience what would in essence be a a closure. Um, the way that's set up, if you reach the threshold, you you reach a three-day closure, our buildings in essence were were uh. Free of 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 students and staff during that time. Uh, so we were able to. Um, thankfully, reset uh the cases um on the gauges. So that gate, that will be reflected tomorrow. Um, in the, in the um, the counts for the buildings. Uh, that said, uh, we are dealing with um. A number, a high number of cases and that 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 is has, you know, should be said. Um, specifically, um. We are dealing with an outbreak in transportation. Um, where we have reason to believe there's been link transmission that occurred onsite within our transportation staff. Um, we have nineteen uh current um. Members of our transportation staff who are uh quarantined, unable to work. Um, so that, as you might imagine. Is creating um logistical and um operational challenges uh for transportation. We are working through what that um, what our possible response uh will be around that. And we will communicate with our families tomorrow about the impact. But I do want to forewarn uh families that there will be an impact uh in some capacity for transportation. Uh, both on Wednesday and the upcoming days, we're gonna do uh whatever we can to um, you know, keep the buildings open. Um, and keep um, you know, uh, offer in-person instruction uh to the extent we can. But we'll calling upon uh families to the extent possible to help with with transportation. So a little bit of uh other issues about where we are a- as a district and uh in the consideration of of next steps. Um, there, there were some comments including this evening around, you know, some recent um CDC and CHOP articles. That have been released about the value of students being in person. Um, we know this isn't necessarily a new stance by them. Um, we have. The pleasure of having access to the CHOP doctors and Office of Public Health regularly. Um, their stance of valuing in-person instruction is something with which we completely agree. Um, we want students in person to the extent possible. Um, we also believe and we've, we in other schools have proven that kids uh can be safer in schools. There's critical points around this um guidance around, I mean, excuse me, around this stance that are important. And that is that, you know, even as the, uh, and this is was was shared tonight, but even as this is encourage students to bring students. Uh, encourage schools to bring students back. Neither CHOP, CDC, the Office of Public Health. Uh, none of them have relaxed their guidance recommending six feet distancing in or out of school. Um, and the claim that it's safer in school um i- is true, but it's also connected directly to the protocols that are in place. The masking, the distancing, the ventilation testing, all these are areas of issues, uh, issues that we've prioritized. We continue to prioritize. Masking, improved filtration, ventilation, uh, we've, we've uh purchased some additional on. Air purification systems uh that are around, around the district. Um, but um, that guidance is is really key. I mean, it's really key and we know that it's gonna evolve. Um, in our conversations with CHOP and Office of Public Health regularly, we asked those very questions is what are the, what are the? Uh, what's the likelihood of some relaxation of of some of the distancing requirements? What does that mean for us? Because the, we're finding the doctors and the Office of Public Health are sharing very much the same perspective that we are, that we want kids back. Uh, we wanted them back safely, but we want, you know, how can that happen? And so we felt that shared type of, shared type of per- purpose. Um, so we'll, we'll obviously be monitoring that guidance and getting a sense of how that i- is evolving a- as we go. Uh, an additional mitigation strategy that the CHOP Policy Lab uh research group has been prioritizing and endorsing is the COVID nine. COVID nineteen testing programs in school. Uh, the regular testing uh that we have adopted, we're one of three districts in the area that has adopted this. Um, that testing program, you know, builds confidence, it eases concern of staff and families. As well as identifies potentially contagious people earlier. Um, and so, you know, the antigen testing in in Hapo Horsham is in week three. It's running smoothly. Uh, we're getting more and more um participation and interest. Uh, we've had several districts that have come in and visited us uh and talked to us about how this is working. Uh, in the hopes that this can be spread because I think all other districts can benefit as well. And we're also working with with uh CHOP about how the, how this can be broadened. I'm gonna talk about that uh just a moment. Um, so a quick update on the status of the vaccine, the public health numbers, we continue to monitor those with uh many of the same metrics that we've looked at. Um, since uh actually midsummer, um, the the Montgomery County positivity rate um is at eight point five percent. Um, on a good note, that's dropped four consecutive weeks, so it's trending in a good direction. The eight point five percent is the lowest number it's been uh since November twentieth. Um, so that's a good, that's a good sign. Uh, similarly, the county uh incidents rates is a incidence rate is at two hundred and four. Uh, which is also dropped four consecutive weeks. Um, that's the lowest it's been since November sixth. Um, so those are trends that are, that are good, uh, that we certainly hope continue. Um, that uh as other um mitigation strategies in in. Society and the vaccine is increased, we hope that that trend does, does continue. Um, but um, in the meantime, we still are operating in the county under substantial range for transmission. And that part of that means that we are required to, and it's not a choice, it's not a recommendation, we're required to. Monitor the gauges that are on the dashboard and the thresholds for closure are still in place. Some questions about the vaccine and I just want to speak, speak to that a little bit. Uh, we are still in the one A phase. Of the Vaccine Administration uh in Montgomery County. Um, the vaccines are all coordinated through the county. We don't have a. Um, we're not dispensing uh vaccines onsite simply to our staff. We're all, we're coordinating with the county. Uh, unfortunately, the supply has not met the demand. Um, and we have thousands of people in the county. Um, that are on the waiting list uh to be vaccinated in in one A. Um, the county is um working with us to make sure that our employees who are in the one A phase are registered to be vaccinated. But they don't necessarily receive any preferential, preferential treatment to, nor should, nor what I'm at, am I advocating that they should. Um, all the vaccines that the county is getting, they are using, so they're not wasting vaccines by any stretch. Uh, but they are placed in the, in the difficult position of trying to predict the timeline for vaccines. Um, and appointments, so they have more appointments than they have vaccines. And so, you know, we have um Johnson and Johnson vaccine that that seemingly. Uh, on its way to approval. Um, and um, you know, we, more information about that should be coming out. Um, and you know, of the roughly two hundred thousand people in Montgomery County that are still in phase one A that are still waiting vaccines. Um, we, we hope that that happens as quickly as possible. Most of our educators are in one B, um, which will occur obviously after those, those roughly two hundred thousand people in Montgomery County are vaccinated. Um, when we get to one B, you know, if the supply is adequate, you know, the county has vowed to work with us to try to get. Um, our, our staff and other school staff around the county um vaccinated in a coordinated effort. But um, you know, as the vaccine and the speed of the vaccine is important, uh, it's also difficult to predict. Um, and it is not and has never been, you know, a single determining factor either way. As far as decision-making for schools as part of the broader picture of the sense of 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 where we are in a public health perspective. Um, having a fully vaccinated staff does not immediately change the guidance for the mitigation strategies. And does not immediately send us back uh fully. Uh, conversely, not having the vaccine hasn't prevented us from resuming in-person instruction. There's been questions around, um, you know, whether staff, staff taking a stance on this. I mean, our staff is here, they're coming to school uh regularly, they're delivering the program that we're asking them to deliver. Um, they're coming to work every day and at no point have there been any swooping statements from our staff. Indicating that they aren't working until they're vaccinated. So that is not a, that's not an accurate uh narrative. As an employer, we obviously want to support our staff and anyone in the community to try to get. People the uh, the information they need to to be vaccinated. Uh, but with the timeline being uncertain for this, it's um, it's, it's hard to in. Uh, predict the impact that will have on the returning to school process. Um, it is neither a metric. Um, nor a, you know, we're not hitting a percentage that's gonna make us hit a certain uh, certain rate. The, you know, again, this is beyond my scope of expertise, but you know, we're hearing that hospitalizations are coming down and one suggestion about that is that. Some of our most vulnerable people in society are being vaccinated, which hopefully is contributing to hospitalizations uh. Declining. And so that's how I think the, the vaccine will connect with um this, this process of. Somewhat a um, a gradual and incremental return and. Um, so I want to speak to the, the question about, you know, what's the plan? What do we expect next? I think that's a reasonable question. I understand. People in our, in the community have that question. We, we hope to provide those answers for you to the extent we can. But um, you know, I think we need to expect that there's going to be um, the, a return is going to be incremental in process. Uh, there's just not gonna be a, a quick switch. Um, I hear the voices in the community that are pushing for full-time return. Uh, those voices are being here, heard. I understand it. I know that there's, that people want that and they want it soon. Um, and I, and I value people's choice um in this process. But it's really a question of when and how and how we can do that. So as we monitor the status of numbers, um, both the county and locally, including our district numbers and. You know, quarantine and case counts that I just talked about, uh, we do that alongside the accompanying guidance. And at this point, the guidance is not relaxing. Um, so, you know, we do not plan to run. Um, a program as contrary to the, to the guidance of the public, of public health. And bring more students back into a space that has constraints that not, that not allow people to appropriately distance. And so, you know, it's been suggested that perhaps we should, um, we should um move away from that guidance. And uh reduce the the distancing between, between students. Um, and what would it look like if we were to bring students back with, with less distancing? Um, and so, you know, those practical questions have been, have been discussed, uh, both with the Office of Public Health doctors and how will we be responding? Um, you know, on a very basic level, um, we'd be going against um what the, the, the. The distance of six feet is, has science behind it around as far as um hydroplets are spread. Um, but if we chose to de- um, decrease that distance, we would be increasing our, our quarantining. And case counts um with the threat, with that same threshold of closure. Um, if you cannot ensure distancing, we have these conversations with the Office of Public Health. Regularly, if you cannot ensure distancing, you're broadening the quarantine circle tremendously. So if you imagine a high school student. Who goes from class to class, if they were to go to four classes in the day and two other areas of the building. During the day and weren't distanced during that time, um, the quarantine circle for that student would be tremendous. Uh, becomes very um, uh, in incredible multiplier to to almost, you know, functionally. Uh, crippling you. And so, you know, there are challenges with um, with the density of, of the population and spaces, so. Um, that's one of, one of the challenges. Um, so again, the guidance will, 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 will help, help us. We hope that that guidance can be, i- is revisited um by, by science when the numbers around that, around us indicate so. So, um, I just want to speak a little bit to um some of the practicality of. Of the numbers and, you know, people have asked about the choice and and about uh the choice that students have. Um, I'll use the elementary number as an example. The, we have seventy-six percent of elementary families that have chosen hybrid. Um, and they are choo- they're choosing to send their kids in. And they are they're choosing to send their kids in. They're sending them in with the clarity of what we're expecting of them when they're here. And of those, I'm not sure if there's a single story for that seventy-six percent. I think some of them will will choose to would choose to return in full if we could. Others have, and I've heard this this voice as well, that I've chosen to send my child in 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 hybrid. Knowing that they'll be distancing. If if there's not distancing, I will have to unfortunately. Remove my child from 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 hybrid, and that that is problematic as well. So to 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 ask seventy-six percent of our families who have a hybrid, if you'd like to send your kids back in person. Is not a question that I believe is valuable asking because I can't deliver it. I can't deliver it at this point. I can't put seventy-six percent of the kids into the building at any one time. And so, you know, that's a challenging question to ask. I'm not saying that we aren't pursuing, and we'll talk to this in a moment. Pursuing opportunities to survey families. However, the survey has to be one of meaning and purpose and give us information that's going to help program. If seventy-six percent of our families told me they wanted something and I couldn't deliver that, I would just be asking them a question that would only for only further frustrate them. And that's not something that I think is is productive for us. I understand that people want guarantees and timelines. I do understand that. I do understand that people want to be fully back. I can't answer the timeline exactly right now. We've heard some promising projections around. You know, the hope that 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 as we get closer to the end of the year, things begin looking more and more normal. And certainly, hopefully, to start the next school year. But I would be it would be irresponsible of me to sit here today and promise you that. I I just don't think I can. What I can promise you and tell you specifically is specific steps that we are taking as a district and considerations. To bring back more students onsite. And I want to share with you some of the thing that we are doing to try to bring more students back onsite and some of the things that we are considering. First, as we're looking at calendar, some calendar balancing to ensure that students who choose to return in hybrid are doing so in a balanced way. The communication went out recently about next Monday, February eighth, which was initially a virtual launch day for most of our kids. Will be an in-person cohort, in-person day for cohort B. And so looking at schedules and ways to balance the calendar is is one strategy. But on a broader level, we're looking at Mondays and how to better utilize Mondays in our current model. Again, taking, you know, an incremental approach to try to get kids, more kids back in person. How are Mondays best used, including, you know, reassessing the recent Monday? We understand there's questions about the recent Monday pivot that at the elementary level. You know, we are assessing that. Should students be brought in person on the on that third day? There's options for this. So we are actively pursuing that. And that, for example, would be something that we would we would seek to get gather information and survey families about. If there was something we're confident we could deliver. A third issue is we're continuing to prioritize our youngest learners. So we, much like we've brought kindergarten back for five days, we hope to bring. To continue that trend and find ways to bring our youngest learners back. We are prioritizing from the from our youngest students up. Knowing that there are there are challenges at each building and challenges with enrollment. But we have some creative problem solving to think about how that can be that can be done. So again, that too would be something that we would talk to families about and seek their input on as far as their level of interest. We're also seeking to formalize some academic supports that will be in place for kids. Including some allocation of some grant money in ways that can support students either through. Some tutoring or some additional additional support that they may not be receiving now. There's programming such as previewing for preview for coursework to ensure the kids are academically where they need to be for for their upcoming courses. So we're looking to formalize those supports as well. I mentioned the assurance testing that we're doing with CHOP, and we're looking to consider expansion of that. CHOP has made some recommendations about looking to broaden up some antigen testing for students as well. In a way that can, again, build confidence in the communities and for students returning in persons. And we will, we will survey. So I don't want people to think that we're not, we will not be surveying. I just want to be clear that, you know, at this point, we're not asking people the question of whether they fully want to come back or not. And that's not because I'm not curious in that. It's just because that that response doesn't give us much actionable information. So we want this, our survey to be purposeful. We want it to be beneficial for information that will provide the district guidance of how we can proceed. And so so you can expect to hear some information around surveys in the in the very near future. And finally, Madam President, just if I may before, and if I also wanted to thank the thank the the teachers who took their time today to help present. The not only took us a glimpse into what they're doing in the classroom. But also the work that they are doing on a day-to-day basis to really deliver. Work to deliver great, great programming for kids. That even wasn't highlighted in the in the video. It's a process, and this is a relatively new process for them as well. And so they're they are growing with us as well. And in closing, I just want to, you know, kindly and humbly ask you all. To remember, we're in the midst of the worst global pandemic in over a hundred years. We're coming off of January. That's the deadliest month in this terrible pandemic. And through that, you know, none of us have done this before. I appreciated the comments this evening around some public discourse, which I welcome. But I just, I just want to strongly encourage that to be to maintain a level of civility that I think we need to expect of one another. The stakes are high for everyone on a on multiple levels here, from personal to family to job to community. We all have a responsibility for our community's health. This is a difficult situation. It's economically, emotionally, and educationally trying for all of you. And through that, we we know that we have kids, families, teachers, and staff doing the best they can through an incredibly difficult situation. A friend and colleague of mine recently wrote and shared this with me that. We're all not in the same boat, but we're in the same storm. So please keep that in mind as we continue to navigate what I can only hope is in the backside of this awful storm. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. And are there any comments from any other board members?
I just want to thank Dr. Evans for that very informative talk, really, not really a presentation, but really appreciate it. And I did just want to mention that if you hadn't seen the email from. From the meal services, that there is meal service distribution that had to switch because of the weather, but it's on Wednesday. This week at Heath Valley. So if you could get the word out, that'd be great.
Great, thank you. Mr. Greenall.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm actually Tara got dropped and she's in there, but she's not able to speak. So she asked me if I could forward a question, and it is something I saw also. There's been some questions in regards to. Students and families wanting their children, if possible, to possibly repeat this year. And they just wanted to know what the process would be, wanted that's possible, and just if. If Dr. Evans, if you could speak to that, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Greenall. The currently, there's active. Legislature that's being processed that I'm not sure if Ms. Johnson can update us on the status of that as far as student retention. And the process for retention is, but we, to my knowledge, we haven't received clarity on what that process would be yet. But we do know that that's been actively pursued. Ms. Johnson, is there something you can add to that?
No, I can't. Not right now. There I I'm not aware of active movement on that legislation yet.
That's something that Mr. Greenall can report. I can find out and report out to the community.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Wait, Tara just texted me some parent request, repeat, not school. I don't know what that means. Sorry. If we could let Tara back in, she could probably say it better.
I did get back in. Thank you. It was after Jim started talking for me, so I appreciate you, Jim. I do.
Pleasure.
The 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 parents that that I've I've spoken to that have mentioned it, not that the child is, I guess. Failing by their grades or anything, they don't feel that they've mastered the grade they're in or the maturity for that age being at home. So more of a parent request. To have their child repeat a grade. They don't know if it's possible. I don't know if it's possible. Especially with what we're doing. So they just wonder, who could they request? Who do they send a letter to? How do they do it? Is there a form? So that was what I was passing on.
Well, let me gather some information and find out the status of that, and then I'll report out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other board members that wish to come in? Okay, if there's no more comments, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone. Good night.